This is Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. Regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting and reorganization. As a side note, the members will be participating remotely in accordance with Section 6 of Executive Order 5 issued on March 16th, 2020. This meeting is livestreamed and can be accessed through the website. So we will begin by calling the meeting to order, and I will do a full roll call of both the board and the cabinet, so that the community that's listening is aware of who is present at the meeting. All right, so Margaret Harrell.
Present.
Karen Stupin.
Present.
Jim Collins.
I'm here.
Beth Hostler.
Present.
Courtney Troutman.
Present.
Chris Kozinski.
Present.
Okay, all right, we have Superintendent Dr. Moyer.
Yes.
Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Chris Welton.
Yes.
Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Growth, Dr. Grenz.
Present.
Assistant Superintendent for Learning and Leadership Development, Nikki Tamru.
Present.
Dr. Volpe, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
He is not in attendance tonight.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent of HR, Dr. Cohen.
Present.
Executive Director of Communications, Bev Redman.
Present.
Director of Technology, Executive Director of Technology, Dave Smith.
Present.
I think you should say "still here."
Still present.
Research Director, Executive Director of Research and Program Analysis, Mary Ann Limkey.
Mary Ann is not on the meeting tonight.
Okay, and then Jenna Ernst, who keeps our minutes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so at this, did I miss anybody? All right, so at this time, we'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United.
The United States of America and to the Republic of.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. In the name of the. Justice. For. All.
Right. Okay, next item is public comments. Board members will be participating remotely, and so public comments could have been submitted in writing prior to the meeting by filling out the form. We have one public comment, which I will read. It is from Jack Castenoli, and this is the comment. "The class of 2020 has been longing normalcy ever since our last day inside the walls of York High School. We have been craving the days that every York class has been guaranteed: prom, graduation, awards night, and even senior ditch day. We have put the most consequential period in our life thus far on hold for others, for our doctors, nurses, and EMTs. The class of 2020 deserves a sense of normalcy upon the rescheduling of these events, not a cancellation. A cancellation of these events simply rips the class of 2020 of the 12 years of education we have worked so hard for. Reschedule a normal prom and a normal graduation. Normal is not a drive-through graduation. Normal is not a virtual graduation. Normal is not a photo op alone, receiving the diploma we have all worked so hard for. Normal is all being together in one graduation ceremony, not in our cars or living rooms, but at York. Normal is being together where we belong, at the sanctuary we call York High School for four amazing years." That is the only public comment that was submitted. Next item on the agenda, we have approval of board meeting minutes. So approval of March 17th, 2020, and April 14th, 2020 minutes. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, those minutes stand as presented. Approval of March 17th, 2020, and April 14th, 2020 closed session minutes, those stand as presented. Next item on the agenda is the annual reorganization of the board. So at this time, I will turn it over to Vice President Dr. Margaret Harrell.
Okay, sorry, it needs to get off mute. All right, at this point in time, we will begin the reorganization with the nomination for a president. Does anyone have a nomination for president?
I do. I nominate Kara Corforio.
All right, nominated by Jim Collins, do we have a second?
Karen, yes.
Okay, that was nominated by Jim Collins and seconded by Karen Stupin. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I'd like to take a vote, and I will go through the names. I'll start with, or does Jenna, do you want to call the names?
It can just be a voice vote.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so all those four voting for Kara Corforio for president, say aye.
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 Any those opposed? All right, with that, we'll say congratulations to our newly elected president, Kara Corforio.
All right, thank you very much. Just a note to all of you, thank you very much. It really is an honor to serve you and serve the community, but just, you know, to sit alongside you and serve and lead is truly an honor, so thank you for that. Our next item is to elect a vice president, so if there is a nomination for vice president.
I have one. Courtney. I make a motion that Dr. Margaret Harrell be nominated for vice president.
Okay, nomination made by Courtney Troutman, is there a second?
Karen, yes.
Okay, so nomination by Courtney, seconded by Karen. Is there, are there any other nominations for vice president? Okay, there are none, so with the voice vote, all in favor of Dr. Margaret Harrell being vice president, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. Okay, Dr. Harrell is our newly elected vice president. Congratulations. Next is Secretary, so could I have a nomination for the position of secretary?
I have one, Beth. I'd like to nominate Karen Stupin for secretary.
Okay, nomination made by Beth Hostler for secretary, is there a second?
This is Chris, I'll second.
Okay, nomination by Beth and seconded by Chris. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Okay, hearing none, will vote, all in favor of Karen Stupin being secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, congratulations Karen, you are the secretary. All right, so the next item is, we posted the meeting schedule, which is pretty typical to other years, start time of 7 o'clock, and we have two meetings most months, except for July, November, December, March, and June. And if there, are there any concerns or questions about that? Okay, hearing none, then the proposed 2020-2021 Board of Education meeting schedule stands as presented. All right. Okay, so since we are, I think, continuing on, I just wanted to remind our committee structure. We may, you know, we have the option to expand our committees if we want to later, but given the circumstances, the committees will be as follows, and hang on. Okay, we have the Finance and Operations Committee, which will again be chaired by Mr. Collins, and members of that committee will be Chris Kozinski and Karen Stupin. The Policy Committee will this year be chaired by Courtney Troutman, and members on that committee will be Dr. Harrell and Beth Hostler. The Lend Representative will continue to be Karen Stupin. The IASB delegate will again be Dr. Harrell, and the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission Representative for the OWNC will continue to be me. So I think, I don't think I forgot anything. If I did, let me know. Otherwise, we will move on then to the business of the night. We have a lot of business items, which is typical this time of year. So we have a long consent agenda, and just as a reminder, consent agenda items tend to be either routine or items that we have previously discussed or vetted. However, they can be pulled for discussion if desired. So with that, I would first ask if anyone would like to pull any items from the consent agenda.
This is Courtney Troutman, and I would like to pull items M, like Mary, and Q, like Queen.
Okay, so we have items M and Q pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that another board member would like pulled? Okay, then with that, I will ask for a motion for the consent agenda minus items M and Q.
This is Karen. I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, which includes A, personnel report, B, financial reports, C, approval of facility rental fees for the year 2020 and 2021, D, approval of instructional materials for year 2020 and 2021, E, approval of recommendation to increase Conrad Fisher Elementary School Assistant Principal to two, or excuse me, to 1.OFTE, F, approval of year 2020 to 2021 high school student fees, G, approval of year 2020 to 2021 early childhood to 8th grade student fees, H, approval of year 2020, 2021 lunch and breakfast fees, I, approval of student handbooks, J, approval of extension of York Copy Center service agreement, K, approval of the property schedule, addenda, and ancillary documents under the Master Tax Exempt Lease Purchase Agreement with U.S. Bancorp dated July 1st, 2017 for a new four-year tax-exempt, non-bank-qualified lease and purchase of Dell computers, Apple iPads with cases, Aruba Wi-Fi access points, Cisco networking equipment, and Konica Minolta printer, copier, scanners in an amount not to exceed the current value of $1,300,000, which the school district will pay with four annual payments not to exceed $333,731. L, approval of the purchase of server hardware. N, approval of the purchase of network security test services. O, approval of bid number 20-12 Emerson School Parking Lot Improvement Project. P, approval of appointment of school treasurer. And R, approval of donation to Hawthorne and Jackson Schools.
Okay, motion was made by Karen Stupin for the consent agenda minus items M and Q, is there a second?
I'll second, it's Beth.
Okay, second by Beth, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Corforio?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. All right, if I could have a motion for item M.
So I'm not ready to make a motion, I mean, I asked for this to be pulled just because I'm just not comfortable at this time making that kind of financial commitment. I mean, you know, I love.
We can make a motion, and then we can discuss, and then we can decide if we want to vote or table or what.
This is Jim, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to purchase CleverTouch Impact Plus 86 interactive flat panel displays, carts, and cart assembly and mounting devices from Tierney Brothers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $390,000.
This is Margaret Harrell, I second.
Okay, so now, discussion, Courtney, do you want to expound on your concerns?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm just, like I said, I'm not, I am always in support of technology and all that it enhances our students' learning. I just feel like, in the environment that we're in right now, I feel like a purchase at this time is just not a wise choice. I'm trying to wrestle with the idea that there's a real possibility that although we might come back to school next year, we might not be there all next year, and the idea of investing, you know, $390,000 in these boards right now, to me, feels a little not focused on the uncertainty of our financial situation moving forward in the next year. So that's where my concerns lie.
Yeah, this is Chris. I agree with Courtney with regards to, you know, being careful about what we commit to right now, and that it is a significant sum of money, and I think that it'd be best to revisit that at a future date when we have more clarity on the economic environment.
And this is Margaret Harrell, a question on what risk, or if anything, or what's the impact if we decide not to approve that for this fiscal year? Is there any risk that we could not approve it at a later time?
Dave Smith, if you need to elaborate, please do, or Scott, there's no real risk, what it does is it delays the, it extends the period of time that it will take us to have similar devices in all of our classrooms across the building, because we would have the new equipment to coincide with the new construction, and then, you know, the older equipment, the replacement cycle would be over a longer period of time, it would get pushed back. The only other thing is that there, because the equipment is old, there's a cost of repairs, not an extensive cost of repairs. I think some of those parts and things are getting a little harder to find, but I might not be, that may not be accurate with these particular machines, but there's a little bit of a cost, certainly not the price tag of buying all the new equipment, but there will be existing equipment that will break down and need to be repaired.
I would echo Dave's comments, it's really a matter of extending the life of the existing equipment, which may need to be replaced in some cases because repair may not be possible, and also supplies for bulbs and things like that, and of course, just a diminished display quality with students straining to see content being displayed. But, you know, that's the situation, it is, it's the current state, so it would be an extension of the current state for some period of time with a minor increase in repair slash replacement and supply cost.
Dave, is it possible, if we were to hold off on this until we see what next school year looks like, and if there are possibly any other technology needs that we are going to need that we can't really anticipate at this time, and just hold off on this purchase, is it possible that if, as old units need repair or replacement, that we could replace them with these newer units rather than putting money into old units?
That's definitely an approach that can be taken, yes, to purchase on an as-needed basis. For example, and this could be a discussion later, but some of that budget money could be left in the budget as a contingency, should be hit that situation, but yes, that's another approach.
Thank you. This is Karen Stupin, Dave Smith. Do we have an idea of the difference of if we're spending, we're going to have to spend money anyway on equipment that is not working, needs to be redeployed, and we've got actually the teachers who started the pilot, we've got professional development for the new, so I guess this gets into Dave Smith for the funding and the cost differential, and then also maybe Scott Grenz or Nikki, because we, you know, we've got the plan that we've been talking about several meetings now moving forward to what our teachers were willing to do, is those who did the pilot, and were so excited about it, and other teachers were saying, can't wait till I get trained, and they were doing Train the Trainer. I just want us to be careful of a knee-jerk reaction. We just approved one line item of $1.2 million for a parking lot, which is not educational purposes, and the more that we get our staff so ingrained in technology, integrated into how they're learning and teaching, the smoother and more consistent we will be in times like this. So I just, you know, you all know that I don't like to spend the money, but on this one with the deployed, the phased-in approach, we've talked about it many times now, and I would rather us look at all of our expenses and determine where can we trim everywhere. The last piece is, we have to look at, the new buildings are going to get all of this, all the bells and whistles, if you will, through the referendum. And what we're talking about is having the current, the buildings trying to do a phased approach so that all the students are getting the same type of opportunities, and this is just the start of making that happen. So I'm concerned about any, and I know that, you know, I'm always sensitive about the cost. I'm very sensitive, especially right now, but we just spent a lot of money on the other items. That's not educational purposes, if you will, directly in the classroom.
Hi, this is Margaret Harrell, and I have a question. These boards that we're purchasing, is there any, is there any way that these could be utilized in a remote learning situation? Or are these for in-classroom only?
These would be in-classroom.
Okay, so then, Margaret, can I continue for one sec? That's okay.
Can I clarify that, though?
Yes, but let me, yes, so let me just make my thoughts clear, and then we can talk through. So my thoughts on this is, I recognize that this is a way for us to move forward. I recognize that it is technology, and I also recognize the uncertainty. And at this point in time, I'm not just talking about our fiscal uncertainty, I'm talking about if by chance, and I, no one wants this to happen, but if by chance we get into another situation next year where we would be doing remote learning again. And I'm just trying to understand, there's a lot of things that we don't know right now. I'm not suggesting that these boards would not be needed at some point in time, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what next year may look like. And so that was my thought process. So I will stop, and I thanks Karen for being patient, and I'll listen to you.
Okay, what I want us to be careful of is, is it just a piece of hardware versus it, and, you know, we should probably show it at some point, and, you know, have the teachers really talking about what they're doing. But being on the Technology Committee, what I have been able to see firsthand is how the teachers are actually, that are using this. It's the applications, it's how they're constructing, how, all the things that Dave has been talking about for years now, you know, with having the students be showing their work, working together. You're able to do all of that through software applications. Yes, it's displayed from that hardware, but there's so much more to it than just equipment. And that's the piece that, if you're not used to it, you don't understand the transformation that takes place for the students and through the teachers' learning how to use these capabilities, these software, the technology, not just the hardware. And that is applicable to something like e-learning.
Yeah, this is Courtney, and I don't, I absolutely don't disagree with this technology. I mean, I applaud it, and I look forward to it being implemented in our district. I think it's vital, I think it will benefit our teachers and our students. My concern is because of the uncertainties of what our year, not only what our school year will look like, what our kind of income will look like, and what our spending should look like. I'm just concerned about what we might need to prepare for, and so that's where my hesitation is. I am 110% behind this technology, and I want to see this in our classrooms. I just don't know, I can't, I don't feel comfortable with this is the right time to do it, given the state of our life right now.
This is Jen, and I understand everyone's concern about our funding, but maybe it would be helpful to quickly review where our revenue stream comes from. And Chris Welton, if I'm off by more than a couple of percentage points on these, please correct me. But approximately 85% of our revenue comes from property taxes. And I realize the county is allowing people, after they apply and prove that they qualify for financial hardship, to delay their first property tax installment in June to September. uh, to September. But they're not delaying the, uh, September installment. Uh, now the penalty, uh, in DuPage County for not paying your property taxes is your property is sold at auction. And the first thing the buyer needs to do is, uh, write a check to become current on property taxes. Not a lot of people I know that would risk their property to be sold at auction, uh, for not paying their property taxes. So about 5% of our revenue comes from, uh, locally sourced, uh, in other words, our community, paying student fees, paying for lunches, paying for books. About 3% of our revenues comes from the federal government, who, uh, seems to have, uh, a propensity to print money at will in enormous quantities. So I'm pretty sure that given the things that they're printing money to pay for, that they're not going to leave, uh, uh, K through 12 education behind. And about 7% of our revenues comes from the state of Illinois, um, who's asking for a federal bailout, who's committed to education and, uh, the people that, uh, that are on our payroll. Um, so while I consider the state of Illinois the riskiest source of funding, uh, um, I'm fairly confident that, uh, they are gonna pay the money that they have committed to. Um, and now the, from the education, by educational perspective, our, our kids just since, uh, March are already at a somewhat of an educational deficit. Uh, when they come back and fall, uh, to deprive them of new technology and, uh, things that can enhance their learning, uh, just compounds the educational deficit situation. Uh, if we're looking to cut our budget, I, I suggest we look in other areas besides things, to Karen's point, besides things that actually enhance education. Let, let's look at the things that don't enhance education. So that's my two cents.
So, and this is Margaret, and I, I just, again, I, I want to get clarification on, um, I want to get clarification on the use of this tool. My understanding is this is a in-school only. Did I miss something in the utilization? Uh, it was spoken of software. Did I miss something? Is there any way to this? Or how could this, uh, tool be used, uh, both in-school and out of school?
I think that, I, I'm not 100% certain, but I think that Karen's point was that the more adept our teachers get at using technology, the more transference there will be for them to incorporate it into their instruction all the time. Um, and feel free to correct me if that's not what you meant. Um, Scott, uh, would, uh, being involved with the teachers and the pilot and the tech committee would, would verify that. He believes that, that these, uh, tools are extremely powerful to support learning. Um, so I don't think that that part of it's a question. I think the question is the extent to which the board's comfortable with the capital purchase at this time. But, but to your question, Margaret, they, they are for in-classroom usage.
I, I think it's, it's Scott Grinns here. I think the, uh, the learning challenge we would face is one of momentum, but I think we will face that everywhere. Um, so I think the points are valid. I, I can share what I know of the programming that we've done with the professional learning, and I think there is, um, excitement around the topic, but I think that the points that are raised are valid as well. So I can really only share my knowledge of the learning and teaching side of it.
Can, and, and can you, and I know we talked about this in our meeting in, um, the first, uh, meeting in April. Can you just reiterate some of the, uh, experiences and/or excitement, um, that was expressed, um, by our teachers on the opportunity to have these tools?
Sure. So just at a high level, we had a, um, a pilot rollout with, um, three different devices in different schools and, um, did some cross comparison amongst the teachers that were involved in that voluntary pilot to see which device, um, rose to the top. The one that is up for proposal was the consensus. And, um, the excitement is there in terms of the users that, that were there. We had a good degree of variation between the volunteers, some, um, more techno- technologically adept than others. And everyone at the end of the process was excited for the product, um, and looking forward to see what it could happen, uh, in the classrooms. It is for classroom use, um, and it will, will be really, really amazing when it, when it comes to those classrooms, depending upon that timeframe.
So is there any, um, I guess, and I don't know who this really, I'm asking this to, but what's the drawback of just tabling this for even just till June? Like keep the, that money earmarked, earmarked for this, but tabling it till June when we see if there's any other, I guess I would say if there's any other tech needs we, that come about because if the school year isn't going to start off as planned and then once we kind of get our footing, then we could still earmark them for this. And yeah, they may not be there in August, but they might be there in January. I don't know. Could somebody in administration speak to that?
Um, I'll, Dave Smith here, I'll just chime in. I, the, the plan that we have in place that we modified, um, to actually give us flexibility is to, is to purchase these with the carts. And, and part of that just, part of that rationale was, you know, the timing of things. I'm not sure whether, when things might arrive, so we wanted them to be ready as quickly as possible after they did arrive, as opposed to mounting on a wall, which is significantly more effort and time. So given the current plan of, uh, deploying these initially for year one on carts, I, I feel that, uh, um, just to answer your question, I feel that a, a delayed order that might arrive during the school year sometime would still be feasible to implement because it wouldn't, um, you know, it, it doesn't impact the classroom directly in the sense of, uh, tearing things down off of walls and putting these back up on walls. It's, it's, it's assembling carts off, out of the way somewhere and then making those devices available whenever they're ready. So I think that is within the realm of possibility.
Well, I, Kara, I think that's just a, like, I mean, I think that's the ideal scenario that we can, you know, take six weeks and try to figure out where we're at, um, and have a better feel of what, um, you know, where we're at financially before we kind of make that choice. And if we're in a better spot than we are right now, obviously I want to see this technology in all our classrooms and I would feel more comfortable agreeing to this at that time.
Kara, I have a question. This is Karen. So if we were to do the delayed timeframe that Dave Smith just talked about, and I guess Scott Grinns chime in here, and Dave, uh, Moyer, how do we do the professional development at that timeframe and allocate the days, given the teachers and contracts? And how do we allocate that and make it happen versus, um, in the summer going into the new school year?
Well, we're trying to take teachers out of class less and the model that we were talking about, which isn't fully baked yet, had to do with, um, uh, uh, pushing a lot of support through our instructional coaches. So if we took that particular approach, um, then, you know, that would all be job embedded. That wouldn't be, uh, standalone type stuff. Uh, but Scott and Nikki, you certainly can feel free to, uh, elaborate on that.
Scott Grinns here, and yes, to Dave's point, another key element to this plan was to involve the media specialists more. So each, um, media center would have a device as well. So we would have a, a train the trainer model built out in which Tierney or another provider would, would take a, a set of folks, whether it be a certain amount of coaches or, um, a teacher, and they would actually be able to support the, the learning locally versus having, um, teachers pulled out of the class. So it, again, it'll be a delay and a, uh, you know, a need for us to build it back up with momentum, but, um, definitely something will work around if we need to.
Okay. So just a follow on to what, you know, my question, I guess I feel like I agree in that I want the kids to get, um, the resources, because that's very, that's, you know, what we're here for. Um, I just, I guess I feel like there could be in the next couple of months is everything, you know, we're figuring everything out and we're not sure what August and September look like. That is there too much harm in just saying, you know, wait a few weeks and see if there's some other resource that's better suited? And if not, yes, it's a little delayed, but frankly, I mean, everything's sort of, you know, upset right now anyway. And I don't even, I mean, I would question what professional development in the summer's going to look like anyway, but that's kind of a different conversation.
I just wanted to say that I understand the, um, concern over the unknown factors of moving into next year. Um, but I do also hear Scott and, um, Dave Smith, that this could be a tool that could help us. We're gonna, our staff is gonna have a lot of work to do to get kids back on track and, um, catch them up a bit. And if this is something that we feel is really going to benefit our kids in, in getting back on track, then, um, I think delaying it too long might not serve them well. So I can see both sides of it. But delaying it a little bit like Kara had mentioned, um, might be one option to make everyone feel more comfortable.
Um, this is Nikki Tamru. I would just like to say a couple of things. I think the first one is something that we've talked in learning and teaching alongside David Smith is the potential for devices being delayed. So I, I, and maybe David Smith knows a little bit more than I do about this, but my worry about delaying is the potential of if we delay it six more weeks and then we decide to pull the trigger, then it will be delayed exponentially longer because of the already possible delay due to, to, due to the virus. So I don't know if David Smith has any current information about that. Um, additionally, we weren't really planning, to my knowledge, I mean, Scott and I would certainly have to connect on this, but, um, about any sort of professional learning, especially with the utilization of the coaches in the summer, that was all going to take place in the fall. I just, uh, so that's all very much planned and, and ready to go. So I guess my biggest worry is, is if we delay this, then we would be delaying getting the devices even longer, um, due to them being able to be shipped to us.
The, the current delivery times, I'm told, are eight weeks from order. Um, I, I don't know, you know, that's, that's currently what they're running. It's April, so who knows what that'll look like later? So it's hard to say, but that's what it is now.
This is Chris. I just have one more or one additional comment. I think, you know, a six-week delay, I think that we could have, I know we're all working hard with, from a planning perspective to determine how best to adjust financially. And I think more work could be done on, on the planning front within a six-week timeframe. And I know that's, that's been ongoing anyway, but I think, you know, clarity with, on economic outlook, um, is not going to be achievable over a six one, uh, six-week, excuse me, uh, time period. I think that's going to require, uh, likely many months before we get a better handle on it. And so I don't think, I just wanted to make that point. I think we could probably do more planning and, you know, maybe that makes a difference, but we're still going to have significant uncertainty with regards to the economic environment, um, in the six weeks from now.
Kara, it's Karen. I wanted to, um, make sure that I understood what Nikki was saying. Nikki, are you saying that the planning for professional development and, and, you know, to begin the new year is, has been planned and set?
Uh, we've been in talks, um, about how we can leverage the instructional coaches to do some of that work in addition to providing release time for our classroom teachers. Scott's more intimate with the, the, those plans, but I do know that, to my knowledge, we were not planning on pulling the coaches this summer to do any of that, but, but that could be something that I'm not aware of and we just haven't had a chance to connect on yet.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Jim. I, I have no problem bringing this back in June and deferring until then. Um, and I think Chris Kazinsky's right, we're, we're not going to have a great outlook on what the economy is going to look like in the fall by June. But I do think we're going to have a much better window into whether our kids are going to be in classrooms in the fall by June. Um, and if this equipment arrives a few weeks after we planned, I, I, I don't think we take a major hit educationally. Um, but, uh, I also do think that, uh, we need to take a look at the overall budget and prioritize what we can cut, what, what we can delay. Um, this, to cut this item at this point, uh, just seems arbitrary to me. Um, but I, I'll support delaying it till June, but I definitely like it brought back at that point.
Yeah, and this is Margaret, and my, my question on this, this document was not purely financial, and I, and I tried to articulate that. It's more of the, um, you know, trying to imagine the unimaginable, um, and what we are going through right now. And I, I, I do believe that in, in maybe even four weeks, we have a better insight and, and what the beginning of our school year will look like. Uh, it's just at this point in time, I don't feel like we know what the school year is, is going to look like. So I am not, I am not, not in support of this. I am just suggesting that if it possible, we delay this until we get a little better insight into what our school year, uh, will look like for the next year.
Jenna, before anybody calls a vote, or Kara, if, um, if, if you have your, your reference book in front of you, because, um, I'd, I'd have to go look for mine. I think there's something about if the board votes a motion down and then bringing it back at the next meeting for a vote. And I don't know if we can table a motion that's already been made and seconded, but if the idea would be, if, if, if the idea would be that we would come back with a vote, I just want to make sure that technically we're not, um, screwing anything up that, that will come back to haunt us. Do, do you happen to have an answer to that at this time?
Well, I do know that we have to vote on the motion on the floor or, you know, that's presented, so we have to vote on, you know, doing the purchase. Um, so if we vote yes, then it would be a purchase. If we vote no, then it would not. And then, um, Jenna, do you know if we can do another motion about tabling or we just, we would just then bring it back on?
Kara, it's Karen, I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
So can we move through and vote on it on its merit? And so everything is a go, kind of like we do with a bond thing? And so the money is allocated. We're just talking about the timeframe as to when we pull the trigger to, um, to send the purchase order. Do you see what I'm saying?
Uh, I do see what you're saying. I feel like there might be thoughts of that maybe this isn't the item we need, we might not potentially need in the next couple of months, but I could be wrong. That's just what I feel like I've heard, that maybe it's about, um, the, it's the amount of money, but also that maybe this item needs to be held off, you know, and maybe there's something else. But correct me, maybe Margaret, you can chime in.
Yes, and hi Kara. And that is, my question is, will this item be utilized in the 2021 school year to, um, to merit the expense? So that is, um, directly my question. Um, I do know that we can, while we can, um, and I, I believe, and this has occurred in the past, that we could change our, uh, motion. Uh, we could, we could change the motion and, and Karen and Uh, we could, we could change the motion and, and Karen and Jim, I'm gonna rely on you. Uh, I believe we've done this, uh, when we were talking about policy type, um, putting policies in place, that we could change the motion, um, or amend the motion, and that would allow for a delay. I'm looking for.
Yeah, Margaret, it's Jim. And I, I'm certainly no sergeant in arms or expert on the Roberts Rule of Order, but I believe we can vote to amend the mo- motion. And I would be in support of amending my motion to bring it back in June.
I'm just reading one thing. I think that might be the best option.
And if, if Jim would be in support of amending that motion to bring it back in June, I would second that amendment, uh, to bring that motion back in June.
And I would be in favor of amending that.
Second, just, just, can you give me a second?
Yep.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, um, I'll get this off the, okay. So, so they could, could they make them that same motion after they voted down? Right, right. So they could make, so they could, they go to, to, all right, they could table this and then they could make another emotion, another motion to bring it back later? Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, that sounds good. Thanks. All right, yeah, bye. Okay, you can, um, uh, you can make a motion, uh, to, uh, even though the mo-, even though this motion is on the floor, you can make a motion to, um, as a part of this existing item, to, um, uh, table this and direct me to bring it back at a later time.
Do we have to make a motion to amend the motion?
No, you don't have to make a motion to amend the motion. That's not, those, that's, those are not the words that Todd said.
Okay. All right. So can you repeat that?
What he, he said was that you can, um, even though this motion is on the floor, on that you got, you, you, you've had your discussion, you can now make a motion that you are directing me to bring this back to you at a later time.
Okay.
You don't have to vote this down in order to do that.
Right, and we could table the emotion with the exact words, right? We could table that emotion and then have it, um, brought back at a, at a later time?
Well, that was, that was one option that we started talking about. And then he said, you, you could just make a motion where you, um, um, where you direct me to revisit this, that, uh, this, this topic at a later time.
Okay. All right.
So how about I just move to bring this back at our first meeting, or at our meeting in June?
And is there a second?
This is Margaret. I second.
Okay. Any discussion about that? Okay, then we will call for a vote on the motion just made by Jim to bring item M back to the board agenda, uh, in June and seconded by Margaret. Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Hustler?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
No.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, one nay, uh, motion passes. All right, um, item Q, uh, if I could have a motion for item Q on consent?
This is Margaret. And I moved that the Board of Education approved the admission of foreign exchange student B from the Czech Republic to York High School for the 2021 school year.
I'll second. It's Beth.
Okay, discussion? Courtney, did you have any questions or discussion about this item? You're on mute, if you don't know that.
I am trying to talk, if you're asking for me, Kara.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, okay. My Wi-Fi is clearly not working so well. And so I, I, I missed the motion, so I'm assuming we're talking about item Q? Um, okay, so, and I, I know this sounds off and, and I, I feel bad, um, but I think that this is a discussion we have to have. Um, I feel uncomfortable with the, um, approval of, um, students, um, for its, foreign exchange students, given the uncertainty of our country's health situation right now, the constraints in a state and, and our nation, the border situation, whether or not there will be, um, availability for students or anyone traveling into our country. So it seems a little, the timing seems a little off to me. Um, and I'm sure that, you know, the, the, um, the protocols will be followed, but I just don't even know, um, with so much uncertainty and whether or not we're even going to get off the ground in August, um, that we should, and, you know, kind of bring this, um, situation into the mix.
Okay, Dave, could you maybe, or talk to, or somebody, you know, the vetting process a little bit?
CIE is one of the, uh, approved, um, uh, organizations on our list, and they, uh, screen, they do the primary screening of candidates. We've not had issues with them in the past. And, uh, uh, we also obviously take, take a look at, at different factors before we bring things forward. Um, the high school, uh, Student Services Office is the one that, that I contacted about this when some questions were, were, uh, brought to my attention. And, um, is, there's nothing, that organization, this, this was approved before the organization shut down applications, so they're currently on hold. So I think they're being cautious about the fact that they're, they, they may have to make some accommodations with their programming. Um, it is, uh, we obviously would follow whatever travel restrictions aren't in place. I mean, theoretically, um, if, if things are not back to normal, um, there would be no reason for this student to come to the country and, and sit in somebody's house on, on a computer or whatever. Um, and obviously, the, the conditions, we've been very conservative about trying to, uh, maintain the health and safety of our students and employees, and, and we would continue to do that. So it's really the board's choice, I guess, as to, um, approve this and see where we are at that time or to decide that it's not an appropriate, um, thing to sanction at this time and, and deny it.
So, uh, this is my, uh, this is Margaret, and my question is, um, with, um, the student, exchange students that have come in the past, do you have information on when they typically arrive? How much, um, how much time, um, do they arrive before the school year starts in August? Do you have any information that would give us a better idea of what this, what the parameters might be for this person, uh, this student coming into York maybe?
Yeah, Scott, I think you might have dealt with this a little bit more recently than I have, or maybe even Mark Cohen, uh, as well. But typically, they come a couple of weeks before school to try to get acclimated with the family and the community a little bit in some of the school orientation activities. Some of them even play fall sports and they get here in time to start practice. So they're usually here a little bit before the start of the school year is, is, uh, I believe.
That's accurate to my knowledge.
Just as an aside, we approved one in February.
Yeah, this is our second, this is our second one. We typically have three to four. Obviously, this isn't a typical situation, but this would be the second one that, that we would approve if, if we do, uh, uh, go in that direction.
Kara, this is. So it's Courtney, and I'm just assuming that if the student gets here, um, and then we have to go into some type of remote learning situation, that student would just remote learn with the family they're staying with? Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's what they would have to do, or maybe they would go back early. Uh, but then again, you know, of course, if something like that were to happen, you don't know if they could get back. That's, that's one of the things that, the liability is not on us for that. The liability is on the family and the organization for that kind of thing. But yeah, that's, that's, would be what they would have to do.
Karen, I think you had something?
Yeah, Dave, so what do we do with the, with the student that we approved in February?
Well, I think we have to look at it the same way. If, if the situation doesn't allow, um, for that person to travel into the country and things like that, I mean, we, we obviously have to follow the state and federal, um, expectations that are in place at the time.
So for approving this, I assume we're approving it on the contingency that if there were travel restrictions, if it was an ideal situation for them to be here for that learning year, that, that decision would be made and perhaps they would reapply for the following year, or we can look at it again later, correct?
Yeah, you could, um, uh, that could be a stipulation that we, um, contact that organization that, that will accept the student, but only, only if we're comfortable with the current travel conditions and, and, uh, safety expectations at that time. And if, if we decide that we're not, then maybe that company would have to agree to refund the person's deposit or something like that. But we could notify the company that that's the board's position on this.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely something, this is Courtney, sorry, that, um, that would make me for, feel more comfortable about it. If, if given that the travel guidelines and that, the health and safety drop, travel guidelines are adhered to, um, if the company is willing to acknowledge that it's their responsibility, if, if that falls through, then I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll make sure that that's clear.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
This is Chris. I just had one comment just to, after you confirm that with them, just kind of follow up with the board and let us know that that has been confirmed as, and is in place.
Yes.
Because I think it's an important point, and certainly, you know, the world's changed dramatically since February, so I don't feel like we need to be anchored in any, any decisions that we made in February on this issue. Um, so I, I don't want to unnecessarily reject this, but I, I would like just a confirmation that we're all on the same page after you speak with them.
I will make sure that we do that, yes.
And I would like to, and that you follow up with the other approvals that have already been done, too.
Thank you, Kara.
Uh, information.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Dr. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Hustler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Jim? Jim? Jim, are you there? Okay, we'll say absent.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Uh, six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Okay, uh, next is the superintendent's agenda action items. Uh, we have item A, which is, uh, approval of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. So Dave, if you could provide the background and then I'll ask for a motion.
Sure. Um, Luke Pavone is currently the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources at Beverly Hills. He is originally from the Chicago area. He lives, uh, or was a principal at Will Matt, has some experience in District 214. And, uh, is interested, um, they are going to be having their, uh, they, they just have, um, a second child that they've adopted, and their family is in the Chicago area, and they are, uh, they were hoping to, to relocate back to the Chicago area. And, um, uh, he has, uh, some excellent experience negotiating a very difficult contract in Berkeley, um, and actually was involved in Berkeley closing a school, which similar to some of our construction projects are, are going, required them to have to move a lot of teachers around and do, do a lot of different, um, uh, relationship-type things with the teachers to accomplish, uh, uh, some of the goals with that project. So he's got some really good experiences, and, um, uh, the committees all felt really good about him, and, and, um, I am extremely comfortable with him, uh, being the, uh, right candidate for, for us at this time.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Yes, this is Margaret, and I moved that the Board of Education approved Luke Pavone as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources with a base salary of $1,665,039 and a start date July 1st, 2020. I'll second. This is Beth.
Okay, a motion by Margaret and a second by Beth. Uh, any questions or comments? I guess I would just say, you know, we'll look forward to, uh, you know, um, meeting him sometime in the future when we're not in our current situation.
Yes, and this is Margaret. I'd also, uh, like to extend our gratitude, uh, for Mark Cohen, who has served in that role, and to wish him well.
Agreed. All right. There's no other questions or comments? Uh, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Dr. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Hustler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Collins?
Jim said he's having difficulty with his, uh, microphone for the moment.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. All right, item B is approval of interim agreement regarding contractual school transportation with Cottage Hill. Could Chris Welton or Dave give a little background, and then I'll ask for a motion?
Yes, Chris, go ahead.
Yes, Cottage Hill has been our bus company for special education students for, for many years. They've been a really good partner for the district and provide a really good service. And so this contract amendment, or actually, this is an interim agreement with Cottage Hill for the remainder of the school year during the school closure. This, this amendment is for the district to pay fifty-one percent of the normal daily route, daily rate. So this does not include any extra charters or any field trips or anything like that. So it's fifty-one percent of the, the average normal daily rate. The bus drivers, the, so there, there's, we're going to talk about the regular ed bus company next, but they, they, each bus company has taken a different approach with their bus drivers. In, in both cases, we want to make sure that our drivers come back when we reopen. And in this case, Cottage Hill has a great relationship with their drivers, and they call them once a week to talk to them, and in this case, they've, they've furloughed their drivers, and the drivers receive unemployment in addition to CARES Act funds. And this fifty-one percent will help them with their, their fixed costs, that the, their ongoing fixed costs for their facilities. And, but will also help them to bring them back with signing bonuses and so forth when we do reopen. So that, that really is, and, and they worked, it was, it was a, you know, really cooperative effort between working with, with Cottage Hill to come up with this interim agreement.
Okay, do you have a motion?
This is Chris, I'll, I move that the Board of Education approved the interim agreement with Cottage Hill for the 2019, 2020 school closure at fifty-one percent of the average normal daily rate.
This is Courtney, I second.
Okay, a motion by Chris, second by Courtney. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, this is Margaret, and I'm wondering if Chris, Chris Welton could elaborate a little bit on, you know, what is going on in the, in, in the world of transportation and how we came to this agreement?
Well, school districts across the state, we, we are trying to keep bus drivers employed, and we want them, we want our drivers to come back and to drive for us when we reopen. So in this case, they did furlough the drivers, but they tried to make sure that their drivers are being taken care of, and that they will come back and drive the buses for District 205 when we reopen. But, but it, it's definitely, you know, the state school districts in general want to make sure that we keep our bus drivers employed. So this approach that Cottage Hill was, was trying to make sure that the drivers were, were well compensated and made whole during the closure.
So this would, thank you, Chris, and this, another clarification, this would just be, we would be paying this for the school year, correct, for that fifty-one percent?
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
This is Chris, I just wanted to say that I think, I think this was a reasonable compromise between the two parties, which have been long-term partners with each other. Obviously, you know, acknowledgement that they're providing lack of services at the moment on their side for a reduced rate, and then any acknowledgement on our part that they're an important partner to our district in, in terms of paying them. So, good job, thank you.
All right, I just want to say thanks, Chris, for your work on this, really appreciate it. All right, no other comments or questions? All right, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? In the comments section?
Yeah. He voted yes.
Dr. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. All right, item C, approval of amendment to agreement for transportation services with first student. Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add about that?
Yes. First student took a different approach, and they wanted to keep the drivers employed throughout. So, so we, we reached an agreement with them at seventy-five percent of the average normal daily rate. Now, they did not furlough their drivers, they continued to pay and keep their drivers employed, our drivers, and so that they will come back to us. This was, this was a difficult negotiation, but we did, they, they were happy with it in the end, where we have a good partnership, they provide a good service for us, we definitely need to have a good relationship with them. As, as you know, I, I am, I am nervous about the upcoming, we have some difficult years ahead when we are building new schools for transportation, so having a long-term partnership with first student is very important, and keeping their driver, our drivers employed is, is very important to us. I think I've heard on, on average, districts are coming to about, on average, about eighty percent is what the normal, the normal agreement for budget, for contract amendments with bus companies is what I'm hearing. So we were able to negotiate this at seventy-five percent. Again, this does not include their, you know, the the driving for athletics or extracurriculars, this is just seventy-five percent of the average normal daily rate, not including any extra charters.
Our normal routes.
Just normal routes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion for that?
It's Karen.
Yep.
I move that the Board of Education approved the amendment to agreement for transportation services with first student at seventy-five percent of the average normal daily rate.
I'll second, this is Beth.
Okay, so motion by Karen, second by Beth. Are there any questions or comments?
It's Karen. Chris Welton, thank you for giving the perspective of what's happening in other districts. That was going to be my question.
Okay, I would just say again, thanks for your work on this. All right, if there's no other questions, then Jenny, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, and then please yes in the chat box.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. All right, item D, Amendment of Policy 620 on an emergency basis to permit one hundred seventy-six days of student attendance for the 2019, 2020 school term. Dr. Moyer, do you want to give some background on that before I ask for a motion?
Yes, typically in April, we approve the, the last day of school. And sometimes we have to use some emergency days based on cold or snow usually, or, or what would be the, the normal reasons for that. There's a lot, the, the State Board of Education still has not issued a definitive statement on how to handle the approval of the calendars. But we, they did, you know, talk about act of God days for e-learning and remote learning, and, and made several statements. But the reason why we're comfortable moving ahead, being able to approve the end of the school year is because we have a hundred seventy-seven days of student attendance on our calendar. And so the fact that, that the governor came out about an hour after we sent letters home to families, or whatever that timing was on that Friday, and closed schools on the seventeenth, and we were actually closed on the sixteenth, there was some concern about the extent to which we would possibly have to add a day at the end of the school year. But because the state requires a hundred seventy-six attendance days, and we have a hundred seventy-seven, the reason that we're approving the motion this way, instead of approving the motion to end school on May 22nd, is because you have to make an exception to your existing policy allowing us to have a hundred seventy-six days of student attendance instead of a hundred seventy-seven. So I could take questions on that, but that's why we're approving the motion in this way, as opposed to approving the end date. But the end date will still have e-learning extend through Friday, May 22nd.
Okay, could I have a motion?
This is Courtney. I make a motion that on an emergency basis, due to the COVID-19 virus and the related executive orders of the Governor of the State of Illinois, I move that the 2019, 2020 school term consists of a hundred and seventy-six days of student attendance and the hundred and seventy-seven days of student attendance otherwise required by Policy 6.20. And that Policy 6.20 be so amended only for the 2019, 2020 school term, as permitted by, in accordance with Policy 2.240.
I second.
This is Mark.
Okay, a motion made by Courtney, seconded by Chris Kaczynski. Questions or comments?
Yes, this is Margaret, and I just want to get clarification exactly with the mention of the amended policy. So I want to get clarification. I understand that the end of the school day does not change, it will continue to be May 22nd. And that we are requesting that it be changed from a hundred and seventy-seven days to a hundred and seventy-six days to account for the one day difference. But I, I'd like to also get clarification on the request to amend policy?
That's for, that's just for this year. That's just to allow us to do that for this year.
So we would be specifically amending policy because our policy states a hundred and seventy-seven days of student attendance?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's Policy 2, 240, Margaret, that allows us to do an emergency adoption of policy. Any other question or concern? So does this set then the end of the, end of the year end date as May 22nd?
Yes, the end of the school year for all students will be May 22nd. And the last day of e-learning for seniors will be May 13th, which was the last day that they were expected to be in attendance under the original calendar.
And when will that be communicated out?
Well, Bev and all of the people have a whole slew of communications ready to go as soon as, as soon as the, you know, board approves some of these things, and, and the timing is consistent with what you expect of us. So Bev, if you, you can comment further, but they've been working on a lot of these different things over the past couple of weeks to be ready to go here.
Yes, just to add that we would be communicating that out to the community tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay, then Jenny, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Dr. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, item E, approval of themes instructional grants. Dave, you want to give a little background before I ask for a motion?
Absolutely. So as you know, the foundation, our foundation is absolutely amazing, and this year they're awarding one hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and seven cents in their themes grants. And four will go to the high school, four to the middle schools, and ten to the elementary schools. And they also gave you a little bit of a breakdown of that dollar amount into STEM, iPad, behavioral health, and literacy and unified arts. So they are, as always, quite generous, and we are extremely grateful and would recommend that you approve these grants.
Okay, could I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that the Board of Education approve the award of funds for the 2020 themes grants totaling one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and seven cents, as funded by the District 205 Foundation.
This is Margaret, I second.
Okay, motion by Jim, mark, second by Margaret. Any comments, questions, et cetera?
Just a quick comment, just to, wanted to say thank you to all the folks that work very hard in association with the foundation, it's just tremendous work, and thank you for their continued support of the district.
And Kara, it's Karen, I just wanted to say, I mean, they didn't miss a, a beat, did they? You know, they're moving forward and making all this stuff happen in the same timeframe. It's wonderful. Thank you.
And this is Margaret, just, just diddling, really appreciating all the work that the foundation has done for us over the years, and particularly calling out all the work that they're doing with the community during this COVID-19 crisis.
Yeah, just thank you to the foundation, and also in, you know, just that the grants, a lot of them are across the district, so it addresses, you know, some of our, our concerns, and also, you know, ensures equity, which is important. And so that is, I really appreciate that they're working hard to provide experiences that are equitable across the entire district. So, special thank you to them for everything. Okay, if that's it, then anything else? Okay, Jenna, you can- Okay, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. Okay, the next item is also from the foundation, uh, funding through the foundation to support the emergency relief for students in need during the COVID-19 crisis. Dave, do you want to give just a little background before I ask for a motion?
Yes, um, we had, uh, several different, uh, community, uh, members and groups approach us when this, uh, was all first, uh, revving up in March. And, um, uh, when we engaged the foundation, uh, they were able to build a coalition of, uh, people, uh, through their infrastructure where, uh, we, we could have an organized approach that would help leverage the, the, uh, volunteerism and the people that wanted to try to, uh, support the community needs. And have now, uh, raised, um, 75, helped, uh, raise $75,000, uh, to go, uh, toward, uh, local food banks, um, various other, uh, types of, um, support, uh, across the community. And, uh, even got creative and were, was able to, um, uh, coordinate some of that food support in ways that local businesses benefited. This particular, uh, donation, um, $5,000, uh, to support some, uh, uh, need in our homeless, uh, students' families. Um, and then also $10,000 for, uh, food, rent, utilities, other basic needs, um, $15,000 plus dollars for technology needs for families that needed either access to the internet or, uh, for us to, to have enough chargers to send Chromebooks home with families so that they could, uh, be utilized in their homes. So, um, uh, this is, this is, uh, just, you know, one example of the work that they've done to help support the community through the last month and a half, and it's been incredible.
Okay, uh, could I have a motion, please?
Yes, this is Beth, Kara. Um, I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of a donation of $5,000 from the District 205 Foundation to support the costs associated with providing emergency support to students experiencing homelessness. A donation in the amount of $10,000 to support the costs associated with providing emergency relief for food purchases, rent, utilities, and other basic necessities. And a donation in the amount of $15,487.99 to support the costs associated with providing 50 additional Wi-Fi hotspots and 750 chargers for Chromebooks. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 880 Gifts to the District.
This is Courtney, I'll second.
Okay, any, uh, motion made by Beth, seconded by Courtney? Any questions, comments?
I just wanted to, um, say again, the thank you to the foundation for everything they've done in their efforts to pull community, uh, our community together, rally volunteers, um, support the people in our community in all different ways. I'm just blown away by what they are able to accomplish. And, um, also with some new initiatives helping us to support our staff and also our local businesses. It's just been phenomenal what they've done. So just a big thank you.
This is Jim, I'd like to echo what Beth said. Um, they have done a tremendous job. And I, I'm just curious, this is, um, about $30,000 out of the 75 they've raised. Do you know out of the $75,000, how much they've dispersed so far? Does anyone know that?
Um, well, almost all of it. The, the, this donation is, uh, admittedly after the fact. I mean, we were trying to feed people and, and make sure they could learn. And so, um, as it comes in, they just, they just keep giving it out. Now, it doesn't all, uh, it's not all food, all, uh, donations that need to be accepted by the district. So for example, uh, the Yorkfield Food Pantry, the Northern Illinois Food Bank, um, there's a, I think, a third organization that they're involved with. Um, they've also, um, they may have, they, they, they donated, um, I think, some, some money, uh, to some other community organizations as well that are helping support some of these, um, things. So they're, they're acting as a little bit of a clearinghouse to help target money where it's needed. Um, so it, as it comes in where there's a need, it's, it's going, it's pretty much going back out.
Yeah, that, that is great to hear. Um, it's frustrating to donate to an organization that, uh, for a cause, and then, uh, they hang on to the money. So I'm very glad to see that the District 205 Foundation is dispersing the money as it comes in the door to immediately help our own community. I think that is tremendous.
This is an FYI, if you go on the, their website, uh, Jim or anybody else, it, it tells exactly where all the money has gone. Um, you know, the outside of the school district, uh, gives all the amounts. And from a first glance, I think almost every penny's been donated already.
That, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, and this is Courtney, I can, I can just say that one of those, um, community, um, recipients has been the Elmhurst Walk-in Assistance Network, and their support of that, um, volunteer organization that's helping members in our community has been so appreciated and so vital. Um, and, you know, the other thing I just wanted to say, it, it's never been a me, I'm, I'm never amazed by how much money the foundation can raise, but to me, in our current state, the thing that has just, you know, made me even more just, um, proud and humbled is the, how they have, um, been able to just rally the troops. People showing up to hand out food, people showing up to, um, everything they need to do. Uh, you know, I was involved in a text group today, or yesterday, I can't remember, but about somebody needed a car seat. All right, let's get a car seat for them. You know, just, it's just amazing to watch the minutia and the grand scale of everything this organization does for our community. And I am just, as always, in awe of everything they do. So my appreciation is very deep and very profound, and I, I can't imagine being a part of this founding, being part of this community without them. So much appreciation.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. All right, item G, Adoption of SACID Board of Control Governing Board Appointment Resolution. Uh, Dave, do you want to just give a brief summary of what this is?
So SACID is, is a, um, organization, we're a part of that co-op. Uh, they provide a lot of contracted services, uh, for, uh, students like, uh, OTPT. Um, we, we use them for some of their programs, but because we're a larger district, we do a lot of, um, uh, we do a lot more internally than some other smaller districts can do. But regardless, um, they, we're a member of this organization, and this is an annual, um, thing that we do every year. We have to, uh, uh, appoint, uh, people to the governing board, and, um, uh, they're, it's the same people as it was last year. So, um, there's a, there's a Board of Control, and, um, uh, then I think the second, the second, uh, board is the governing board. So there's two separate organizations. The Board of Control meets every month, the governing board meets twice a year, and that's probably primarily to approve the budget.
Okay, could I have a motion?
Yes, this is Margaret. And I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution appointing Dave Moyer as representative and Courtney Troutman as alternative to the SACID Board of Control, and Karen Stupin as representative, and Beth Hostler as alternate to the SACID Governing Board.
I'll second. So motion by Margaret, seconded by me, Kara. Uh, any comments, questions? Okay, thank you to all of you who are signed up to serve. Jenna, you can, uh, call the vote.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. All right, next item, Approval of Resolution of Appointment to DuPage Area Occupational Education System Board of Directors. Dave, if you could give just a very high level of what that is?
Yeah, this is, um, again, an annual thing that we have to do, and, um, this is the, um, group where we have students take some classes out there that, that we don't offer. Um, I think fire science is an example of something that's very popular, uh, that, that some of our students take. But it's, it's at the Tech Center, and, um, Scott is the, uh, rep for this year, and it's recommended that you approve him to be the rep to the board for next year as well.
Okay, uh, could I have a motion, please?
This is Beth. Um, I move that the Board of Education adopt the Resolution of Appointment to DuPage Area Occupational Education System Board of Directors, which appoints Dr. Scott Grenz, Assistant Superintendent of Innovation and Growth, to serve as its representative for the 2020, 2021 school year.
This is Margaret, I second.
Okay, motion by Beth, seconded by Margaret. Any comments or questions? All right, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. Okay, next, uh, item is superintendents communication, and we, uh, are going to talk about, um, graduation and end of the year activities, which we know are very sensitive to our community and our seniors, as we find a way to honor and celebrate them within the current situation and realities. So, um, Dr. Moyer, if you want to just give some, uh, updates and information, and then we'll discuss.
Um, yes, and so a lot of people may, uh, uh, chime in periodically here because there's, there are a lot of people that have been involved in, in the planning. Uh, Scott Grenz has worked with the high school, Bev's been working with the communication, um, Mary, uh, or, excuse me, Nikki's been working with the elementary schools. And then, of course, there, there's a lot of events that, uh, overlap with the whole continuing of education and, and all of the different things that, that had to do with state regulations that start to involve, you know, essentially everybody, uh, in the organization. I meant, I started to mention Mary Ann because she's had, had different levels of involvement as well. Um, so the end of the year document, uh, is just intended to be an update to let you know that a lot of these different, um, things have been in process for an extended period of time. And in fact, even since I put this in the packet, on, uh, in your packet on Thursday, um, we've since, uh, essentially finalized the elementary, uh, plan for end of year activities. We have the draft document that's going to go out, uh, to families tomorrow, uh, and employees about accessing the buildings for end of the year to get things out of the classrooms. Uh, the middle school, uh, similarly to the elementary, the middle school planning is, is almost nearly complete with a communication that'll be ready to go pretty soon. And so some of these events, um, are different things, like the, the teacher recognition things that they do in their building, uh, the way they recognize fifth graders, trying to do virtual field days, um, and, and, uh, you know, they're, uh, uh, they're, uh, a- any end of the year traditions that they, that typically go on. What we did is we tried to accommodate the fact that they have some, some specific traditions and things that are unique to their buildings, but we wanted to make sure that there was some consistency at all the grade levels across the school. So for example, the amount of money that they're spending on their fifth graders, even though it's, it's slightly different at each school based on what they want to do, is, is roughly the same. So they're, they're all generally in line, um, and, and, uh, that's been, that's been, um, a very intentional, uh, attempt to coordinate that. Uh, they had to submit their plans to us, and then we worked together to try to make sure everybody was on the same page. And we're almost ready to have the communications that will go out. Some of them already have, uh, in some cases, particularly at the high school. Now, the, the, the two end of the year events that are on here of, um, some significance are prom and eighth grade promotion. And so before we get into the graduation conversation, I wanted to, um, you see that there is, uh, uh, in the end of the year closure document, um, an item about, um, getting input from seniors and the community. Uh, we have a survey that'll be ready to go out tomorrow. So depending on whatever decisions are made about how we, we, um, uh, want to move forward, these, these different types of plans have been, uh, in development for weeks now in anticipation of the fact that some of these things were, uh, more likely than not. Um, so when it comes to prom, we are recommending cancellation. Um, we do not believe that, uh, under the current situation with school close to the end of the year, people starting to talk about closing festivals, uh, in Ju-, or already closing, canceling festivals in June, that to try to, uh, hold an event, uh, with people that have already graduated, and to both supervise that event and ensure the safety of the people with whatever group size, uh, limitations are in place, putting all of those kids on a bus, the proximity, um, regulations that are in place. People are talking about the start of the school year possibly being compromised. Um, we just don't think prom is feasible. We know that that is going to upset a lot of people, but that's, that's what we, uh, believe. And the second, um, thing that's of some, uh, well, not some, that is significant on the end of the year document, is the recommendation, uh, for eighth grade promotion to be a virtual ceremony. Um, we don't feel, uh, strongly that we can adequately plan for the end of the year graduation of seniors, and any of the special events associated with the seniors that may be, uh, uh, special and, and of some, uh, uh, it, it could be an event, it could be a series of events, it could be a lot of different things that we do. But if, if there is some way to return to normal, normalcy with the middle school kids, a lot of those people are going to want to participate in the contact days, in the summer camps. They may be taking some of these summer school classes that we're going to talk about. And so, um, uh, the middle school principals were working with, uh, Dr. Grenz, and the recommendation there is that that be a virtual event. So I want to pause before we get into what'll likely be the, um, uh, you know, the conversation that will, um, take, take some time to work through, and, and pause to have, uh, allow people, uh, to, to make any comments that they, they might have on, on prom, or eighth grade promotion, or anything else that they have in mind by way of question as to some of the, uh, pro- in mind by way of question as to some of the preliminary planning that's been going in to the end of the year.
Okay, well, I'll start. I have a question. Could you just articulate or share, you know, I think that, well, I think that you've been in contact, or the administration has been, with other school districts, and kind of what's the pulse on prom everywhere else in our surrounding districts? Can you share any insights on that?
Yes. The high school administration has been on regular conference calls with the West Suburban Conference Athletic Directors, Activity Directors, Principals, all of those various different groups have been in communication with each other on a regular basis. I would say, and Scott, help me out with this if I'm making a statement that is not accurate, but the majority of the districts have canceled prom, some have tried to hold out some hope that there could be a prom in July. I know of a few districts that are trying to do that, but many, for example, 87 and Glenn Bard are incoming principal, you know, obviously I have reason to talk with him about different things as we transition, and so, we pretty much have a pulse on what the local districts are doing. And Scott has been in contact with a lot of the people through this organization we call CATCA, which is Chicago Area Directors of Curriculum and Assessment, and they've been doing a lot of group surveys with shared documents and things like that to try to find out what other people are doing. So, Scott, can you just reinforce anything I said, or clarify anything if I misspoke?
Yeah, I think that was comprehensive. One of the items that was shared recently in an email was from a neighboring high school district in which they shared a similar approach to plan on engaging their seniors soon to see what they can do to be celebratory and to give them the recognition that they deserve after all the time in the district. One of the items that they mentioned in the email was that they did not want to set up anticipated dates with any sort of false hope down the road, and I think that was a really thoughtful approach to take, although a difficult one, and I think that is in alignment with what some of the thinking is here tonight, which is not being able to predict the future, of course, and not being pessimistic, but also trying to be realistic and to think about some sense of closure for our students in a way that doesn't continuously make this a bigger challenge than it already has been for everyone.
Well, I got to say, you know, personally, because, you know, someone in my family's going to be affected by this, it's a really, you know, I think that we all know, but, you know, it's a tough thing for kids to swallow, and I guess I would just say I hope that they understand that we know that it hurts. And, you know, I understand the thinking, but it's still hard, and I just want to acknowledge that. Other comments, questions about prom or eighth grade?
I just wanted to say thank you to the middle school principals and everyone else who's working together so that there is some consistency across, or what those kids will see for their year-end events. I know it's hard for everybody, but I think it just makes it a little easier if everyone's working together and that looks the same for our students. Thank you.
So, this is Margaret, and I'm wondering for the middle school promotion ceremony, can you give, so this is all new information for people, can you provide any more detail about what a virtual graduation may entail?
Yeah, Scott, you've been working with the planning more directly with the middle school on that, so I'm going to turn it over to him to share some ideas, because I think he'll give better specific examples than I can.
Sure. So, Margaret, thank you for the question. The middle school is proposing sort of like a date and time in which a virtual session would be recorded and shared out, capturing a series of speeches and other, you know, presentations along the way. The idea is that they would, you know, make sure that that was something that would be shared with families in advance, so they could, you know, sort of schedule it similar to a family event in which people would sit down, gather around, and, you know, participate in it in a celebratory way. The idea is that they want to have, you know, counselors involved along with grade-level team members to do some of the planning, there would be some highlights of the eighth graders along the way, obviously be different from school to school, you know, based on the unique characteristics of each building. They would have, you know, some sort of school-based award pieces along with potentially student speeches as well as staff in the process. You know, trying to make it as uplifting and celebratory as possible by doing that, but also acknowledging that it is, you know, not the way they wanted to go about ending the hard work.
Thank you, Scott.
Are you working with PTAs as well, Scott?
So, we did have some several conversations with the PTA, and there's been a lot of interest in volunteering to support a lot of the initiatives that are in planning. I think that, you know, approach Dr. Moyer articulated earlier was to, you know, see what the sentiment was this evening, and then to start to be a little more action-oriented moving forward. So, there are some preliminary plans in play to make sure that students have a process to get things like caps and gowns that were purchased, yearbooks, and the PTA has expressed, you know, several different ways in which they can support some of the planning.
Any other questions or comments about the middle school or prom? I, oh, I have one more question about prom. How is this going to be shared with seniors, other than probably right now it's already all over social media?
Well, like I said, Bev's been busy, so might as well let her share.
Tomorrow, there will be a master communication recapping everything that we have gone through tonight, and whatever those outcomes may be, communicating that to the entire community.
This is Chris. I just had a quick question on hosting events in general, and was wondering what guidance we've received from our legal partners on liability exposure for the district if folks were to allege that they contracted COVID at an event that we host.
So, we are not hosting any events, Chris. Everything that they're doing at this point for year-end activities is virtual. Some of these things like dropping t-shirts off at fifth graders' homes, our nurse has been in contact with the Health Department, our head nurse, on anything related to can we enter a building, how do we manage pickup and drop-off of food, et cetera, and all the guidelines from the Health Department, and including involving our facilities people with proper cleaning schedules that coordinate with whatever we're doing is being very tightly monitored. I have, I barely let anybody in the building, and it hasn't made a lot of people happy, but the only exceptions we've made to let anybody in the building have been if somebody needed to get their medicine, if there was a special needs student that needed a special device at home and wouldn't be able to function if we couldn't get that to them. So, there were a couple times where we let some different people. We have one employee who's moving to Florida before the end of May, need to get into their classroom. Now, since the schools were closed, the school closure was extended, the governor has said that students and teachers, the district can allow people to go back to their classroom. They gave, the Board of Education gave some guidance, which I vetted through our nurse and also through our legal counsel last night, and that draft memo that I referred to about getting personal belongings out of the building is going to go out tomorrow, so that has been reviewed by our legal counsel. Any of the other ideas that we've had that have come to us about wanting to put banners up at the football field, or all these different ideas that people have, are things that we want to include in whatever these summer celebrations are, but we want to have a coordinated, comprehensive plan that honors all of our students, not just certain groups of students. And when we have that plan in place, we will also review any safety ramifications about anything that encourages people to congregate in the same place at the same time. We have made some exceptions for construction in that we had to get different things out of Edison, and that started last week, but, or no, that started this, started this week. But all the rest of the schools are going to be expected to develop a plan that we, when we get their individual plan, where the district administration is going to vet it through the lens to make sure it's meeting all the criteria before we allow people to access the buildings. So, the short answer is that yes, but the reason I decided to elaborate is because I want people to know that these things are complicated and there's extensive involvement with a lot of different groups of people in order to plan for these types of things to ensure the actual safety that you're asking about.
Well, thanks, Dave. And just to be clear, I think my question wasn't, I didn't have in mind concern about events we're currently hosting, because I know that we've been tight in complying with the guidelines that are in place for all of us right now, but I was bringing it up as an input that I would like to know when I consider hosting events in the future and when we can restart those types of activities. I think it's an important data point that our district should seek advice on, and I would appreciate being updated when we get some opinions back on that.
Yeah, yeah. So, as of right now, we don't have any provisions for any in-person activities, but I will note that the board is interested in receiving information on all the provisions that we make to support whatever it is that we end up deciding to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this topic? Okay, then we'll move, I guess we'll move on to graduation?
So, graduation, obviously extremely important event to the community, very high-profile community event. We did not want to start to get too far into formal planning process without engaging the board and making sure that we were clear about what the board would like to see. We also wanted to make sure that we took the opportunity to get input from the students and include that into the planning. We didn't do what some other districts did, which was go through a bunch of hypothetical scenarios in March when this first hit us. We wanted to try to make final decisions when we thought we had accurate information so that we could process through it and communicate it better to the community, and we wanted to have the board involved in that conversation on the front end, rather than getting too far into the planning process and find out that maybe we missed the mark and we're not consistent with what the board was looking for. So, the information that you have basically says that we know that everybody would like to have a traditional graduation, if at all possible. So, we can schedule a date in July and try to accommodate that if the conditions allow us, and so, I think what we need some guidance on is we probably have to make some provisions for virtual graduation if that is not possible. And I think that the question is, would the board want us to do a virtual graduation closer to the end of the school year when the kids would graduate, and then hold an event in July that is a traditional event? And if that's not possible, we would then, or in addition to that, could do some other recognition types of things for students and their families? Or do we put off the virtual graduation and see if conditions allow for a traditional graduation, and then if we have a drop dead date for a decision, if we can't move forward, we go with the virtual production? I think that, I think the idea is, we all know that we want to do a traditional graduation, if possible, but how do you want to handle planning for and communicating the backup plan if that's not possible? Because there is, there's a 34-day lead time required to produce the virtual graduation.
Hi, Dave, thanks. This is Margaret, and recognizing this is a very sensitive topic for all our graduating seniors, their families, and for our community in general. And the information you gave about the 34-day lead time, if there was a need to do a virtual graduation, is also important information for us to have. One of the other pieces that I think may be important to have is to see seniors, their availability in July. I know sometimes seniors have plans if they're entering military service, they may be leaving before that timeframe, and/or if there's any college events that they may need to attend before that timeframe, if they're going away for any pre-events. So, I think one of the pieces that would be helpful would be to understand the availability of our student population to be able to participate in an event, a live event in July.
Yeah, I picked the 19th, that was arbitrary, that was the second-last day. We could move that back to the 26th if you wanted to, just to allow for a little bit more time, but that really starts to get close to bumping up into kids' August plans to start gearing up for college, and that's why I picked the 19th, but that doesn't mean that that's a magic date. And I agree with you, that's one of the, that's one of the things we have to take into account, is that the student, Bev has a survey that she's working on, and maybe we can work some of those types of questions in to get some information that we can use for our planning process.
Yeah, I think that would be, and Bev is a master for communication, but I think some of those key questions would, you know, may include, you know, just, you know, for those students that are perhaps going off to the armed services, you know, what their departure date may be, and/or for students who are involved in other collegiate activities, which sometimes start earlier in the summer, what their departure dates might be, to determine if July timeframe is feasible for as many students as possible.
Margaret, this is Bev. Yes, the survey draft that we have will include, and we can certainly be specific to ask about availability, but would rank considerations for students and ask something about their schedules, what would they prefer to see?
Hi.
Thank you.
Beth here. I just wanted to say that while I agree that we all would love to have an in-person graduation if at all possible, and having that July date out there as a possibility is something to think about. I do personally like the idea of having the virtual graduation ceremony be closer to the date when kids would normally be graduating. I think that, to Margaret's point, for those who wouldn't be able to attend, if we could do a in-person graduation in July, for those who would be moving on to the next step, I think it would just be nice to have some closure and be able to recognize them close to the time when they would normally be graduating. As you've mentioned, there are other things we can do in addition to the virtual ceremony, and I love that we will be getting input from our seniors and their families about those other possible non-in-person types of celebrations that we might be able to do and really try to make that year-end virtual plus event as great as we possibly can. Because like all of us, my heart really goes out to our seniors. I know this is not what they want at the end of this year to look like. I just think that it would be nice for them to have some closure and some closure to the end of the school year as well for them.
This is Chris. I just wanted to reiterate the sentiment that several of us have brought up, just in terms of acknowledging the challenge here for seniors in the district and their families as well. You know, I know we all wish that we had a better set of options and circumstances to make decisions with, but unfortunately, we don't at this point. I agree with Beth in terms of moving forward with planning for a virtual ceremony. I think my personal preference would be more of a dual-path process where, you know, we plan for both and just be straightforward with folks that, you know, we're going to make a call on a certain date with regards to virtual or in-person. And to some degree, that will be out of our control, depending on the guidelines that come out that we're all subject to at the time. But I do think for, from a health perspective, which is what drives this particular decision, I think the value of time, I know it extends uncertainty for folks, but, you know, if we think back four weeks ago, for example, you know, a lot's changed in four weeks, and I think a lot, you know, maybe could change four weeks from now. And I just want to make sure we at least have that option value built into the plans to where if there are positive developments that would allow a physical presence ceremony, that we could do it. And if that's unfortunately not the case, then we can go a different pathway.
Hey, this is Courtney, and I agree wholeheartedly with what Chris just said. I think that for several reasons, I think it's really important, and I think we all agree, our first choice would be that in-person graduation. And I think that if we can offer that July date as our option one, because that's what we all want to see, but at the same time, plan for if that end-of-July date doesn't work, then we will go ahead with a virtual graduation during that same time period. I think our community will appreciate the fact that we have done what we could to make this happen, but that we don't want to let the day go unacknowledged. We want to do everything we can to acknowledge the hard work our seniors have done all these years, but I do think we owe it to our community to give them that in-person graduation and wait as long as we can before we pull that white flag and say, okay, we're going to go with virtual. And I think that 34-day lead time would give us, you know, June 1st, right? So at the end of May, we'll be able to better understand whether or not an end-of-July graduation could happen, or, you know, June 15th, we'll be able to say, look, end-of-July doesn't look like it's realistic, let's start, let's go with the virtual. But I think that if we start with saying, all right, in the May, we're going to do virtual, I feel like we're giving up hope. And I think everyone in our community, in our country, I think we need something to embrace and something to hold on to. And graduation is a cornerstone of this community, every community, every high school, every high school senior. And so I feel strongly that our first option should be that in-person July graduation, with the understanding that it might not look exactly like it's looked in the years past, and that's okay, because guess what? Our world doesn't look like it looks in the past years. And I also feel strongly that I know Bev will do an amazing job in her survey to the community, but I think the seniors and their parents, because it matters to the parents, right? This is a, I cannot be not emotional about this conversation, and I don't even have a senior, but it matters to parents. So I feel like their vision and their hopes should be communicated in this survey, so I'd really like to see Bev's survey go out to not just our seniors, but to our parents of the seniors, so that all of our voices, all of the community's voices are heard, and whatever that ceremony looks like in person, hopefully, but if it's virtual, it embraces everything, all the ingenuity and creativity that all those kids have, because, you know, this is going to be the thing they walk away from York with, and I just, I think we owe it to them to give them everything we can, everything we can. And I know we will, so that's my position on it.
Karen, did you have anything?
Kara, it's Karen. Yeah, this is really tough. You really want to have the same graduation. And if you don't have that, which it's not going to be, because it's not going to be right in May, and it's not going to be, you know, ending their year. So already, we can't make it what you'd ideally want it to be. And so, you know, as much as, I'm not sure I like the two-pronged approach, because it can be confusing. We talked about expenses earlier, I mean, it could be that. It's a lot of time that people are going to put into, you know, planning a Plan A and Plan B. But I would support that. I'm not, I wonder if it is later in the summer. One, is it really going to happen if Chicago's already canceling June events? But two, will it be so long that people won't even attend? So I'm just kind of throwing out a lot of the, a lot of the thinking, as I struggle with how do you direct the administration? Because there's a lot of things that they're working on, too, for all of our kids. And so I want to be sensitive to everything, you know, our seniors, our families, and our people. And, you know, what is not going to burn everyone out as well?
I do want to say on behalf of everybody that I appreciate that sentiment, because there are a lot of people that have really been running at max capacity for a long time here, and so it's very kind of you to say, you know, we'll obviously make graduation happen to the best of our ability and make it as special as we possibly can. You know, some clear direction will help us be able to develop a plan, and we will have associated events that we will put together, and we will make this as, under the circumstances, you know, as special as we can, to provide some closure and some opportunities for people to celebrate their accomplishments and, you know, reunite in some way with their friends and mark their memories before they move on to another chapter. But, I mean, I think that we know that we want to have a plan to hold a July graduation if possible. And we are going to get input on how to do other things associated with the end of the year to honor and celebrate all of our students, and that's part of what we're going to get input on. And we've already been getting all different kinds of suggestions from kids and parents and teachers and everybody. And there are some consistent themes that sort of start to emerge, and you see what some other schools are doing, you get some ideas. But, you know, I think, I think we need some clarity, if, do you want us to plan the virtual graduation now closer to the end of the school year? Or do you want to hold off and have some type of a drop dead date where we put that, push that back? If, I mean, I think that's what we need to know, I think, to proceed with some of our planning. Because if we want to do the virtual, I mean, we have to start, if we want to do the virtual close to the end of the school year, we have to start that immediately.
So this is Courtney, and just so I'm completely clear, my position on this is that we do not start that virtual planning until we deem that a July 19th or July 26th in-person graduation is not a feasible option safely. So I feel strongly that an in-person graduation should be our Plan A, with the very clear communication that I know Bev will administer, that come, you know, June 15th or June 22nd, whatever the date ends up being, that if we do not feel comfortable about the safety and health of our community by holding an in-person graduation, then we're going to go to Plan B, and that would be that end-of-July virtual graduation. I really feel strongly that our community and our seniors and their families, they want to hold on to something, and they want to, and they'll be there, and they'll show up, and they'll embrace it. And I feel strongly that we owe it to them to do, hold out as long as we can, within reason, to give them that in-person date. And I think that if we pick that July 19th or July 26th, we have until June 15th and June 22nd, depending on, you know, that 34-day lead time, which I feel like six weeks from now, we'll have a way better, we'll have a much better opportunity, ability to make a decision.
Let me just confirm with the high school, and if we take that route, if that's the consensus of the board, let me just confirm, maybe after this survey comes back, we'll get a pulse on how late in July the community could support an event. And then I will also have to get clarification from the company, what the last day is, you know, is it June 15th? I mean, I think it's around June 15th, because I counted 34 days, but, you know, we might not want to cut it quite that close if there are some different things we have to take into account to manage the process and everything else, but...
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just using those dates based on, you know, that 34-day, but, you know, I feel that, you know, and I never like to hold it up to 34 days. If somebody tells me 34 days, I'm going to factor in 40 days, right? Like, so I get it, but I just feel like I do not want to throw up the white flag on holding an in-person graduation right now, and I feel very strongly about that. And I think a majority of our community does, and I think that Bev's survey, when it's sent out tomorrow, you will hear those kind of results come out.
Yeah, and this is Margaret, and I hear and recognize and support your passion, Courtney. I also, I also believe that there is going to be a percent of students who will not have the opportunity to participate in a July event, and that they need some type of closure that is closer to the end of the school year. So that is why I would be more supportive of definitely having a July event planned, but having something planned for those students who may be moving on for reasons outside of their control, maybe moving on to different types of events.
I want to just circle back for a second. Jim, do you have anything? You want to, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I look forward to the results of this survey. I want to be as responsive as we can possibly be to the desires of our seniors and their parents, because they're the people that earned this recognition. So let's see what they have to say, and then let's develop a plan to be as responsive to their desires as we can possibly be.
Thanks, Beth. I think you were talking to...
I just wanted, Jim kind of spoke to what I was going to say, but my concern is just, and I know you talked about including this in the survey, my concern is for the percentage of kids that would not be able to make it to that July event. The virtual event would recognize everyone, and without losing hope that we could do something in person in July, I do feel like we need to make sure that everybody is recognized in some way, and I just am a little concerned about the percentage of kids that might not be able to make it in July, and then they would not really have had a virtual recognition in lieu of being able to attend the in-person one. So that's my concern, and maybe with this survey, we'll get more of a read on what percentage of kids would be able to make it to that in-person ceremony if we're able to have one.
So I just wanted to just say, like, you know, in thinking about it, and obviously, you know, this is hard, graduation is like three things. You're honoring the kids, you're celebrating, and you're also saying goodbye. And I feel like as these events roll out, you know, I would like to know that those are the three kind of overarching themes. How are we honoring the kids? How are we celebrating? And then how are they also getting an opportunity to say goodbye? Because I think that that also, you know, when you talk about the in-person graduation, while as a parent, you want to see your child walk across the stage, as a student, you want to, you know, you've made that achievement and have that acknowledged, but a big part is also saying goodbye to your friends. And so I guess as we move forward, you know, there's a graduation day that isn't, like, nothing's going to, we're not having graduation on graduation day, correct? Like, there's, we're not, we can't even pull off a virtual thing. It would have to be a different celebration, right? Or something?
Well, right now, right now, we're still in a stay-at-home situation on May 20th.
But just like, I don't know, kind of, I mean, there's 100 ideas floating around, but I guess some way of acknowledging the day, and then later on in June or July, but let the kids and their families choose, you know, what that looks like, so that they honor and, we can honor and celebrate them, but also if there's a chance for them to say goodbye, I think that's, that's an important piece, and maybe we have to set dates even further out where, you know, they can walk through the school if it's not possible in June or July to come back.
Yeah, I don't know when we're going to be allowed to open up our buildings again, and how many people we're going to be able to allow in there, and all those kinds of things. I think everybody wants to do everything we can. Part of the problem with the planning is you're trying to make decisions without information. And, I mean, if we want to include, if your suggestion is to try to include some type in this, you know, series of events, or whatever we end up calling it, something that marks May 20th on the calendar, I think that's a good idea, and I don't see any reason we can't do that. Part of the problem with the planning is you, you're trying to make decisions without information. And, um, I mean, if we want to include, if your suggestion is to try to include some type in, in this, you know, um, series of events or whatever we end up calling it, um, something that marks May 20th, um, on, on the calendar, um, I, I think that's a good idea. And I don't see any reason we can't do that. As far as, as, you know, going back through the school or, um, uh, you know, being able to, to have some type of a, uh, ability for them to, I, I, I don't even know what it would look like, but I, I don't know, I don't know what our, I don't know what kind of provisions we're going to be operating under and when. So that just is what sort of makes, you know, those types of things difficult. I think we could take the feedback into account and we can try to honor all of those things. I just don't know exactly when and how, uh, we can do some of them because I don't know when some of these restrictions are going to be lifted. So, you know, I, I think, I think that in, in regard to Jim's comment about uh, the survey results, we're hoping to have those survey results back on Monday with a quick turnaround. And, um, uh, you know, try, try to begin the planning process, but, uh,
So just, you would basically be pulling them, I mean, amongst other things, you're basically saying a June virtual graduation or hold off with the, is it that July could be potentially in person, but it could be virtual as well?
Uh, this is Bev. I think I might be able to help a little bit here. In my mind and in my conversations and Scott's conversations with the high school, we've always approached this. And this, of course, tonight is not our first conversation, but we've always approached this in about three stages. One is that pre-ceremony, but connection or celebratory time to honor the fact that our seniors do deserve recognition and they are missing their normal graduation date. Two would be when the actual ceremony would take place, whether that would be, uh, virtual before, whether that would be the traditional further down in July. But there would also be post-activity because we do, and when it's safe and healthy to allow it. And that could be further down in the fall. We just don't know at this point. But some post-activity to allow them to connect back to York because, um, they will have a stronger connection instantly as alumni than any other student or senior that we've known in recent past. They would need that kind of connection. So we do have that in mind as well.
Okay, great. So to me, as I, my opinion is you ask the students and families if they want the June or July scenario.
All right. So, so then if it, if it's clear, um, are we authorized to go ahead and, and act based on that feedback? Because if we're not, and we have to come back to you on May 12th, we're pushing the virtual graduation back well into the summer. It, it won't, it, it, it won't, it, it's almost, it's almost a moot point at that point if we have to come back on May 12th.
And, and this is Courtney, and I just, and this, and I, you know, as always, Margaret's opinion resonates with me more than, I'm, I'm sorry, Jim, I know you'll be surprised more than anyone, but, um, and I do feel, um, um, and but like a lot of empathy and heartache for anyone that doesn't, isn't able to make their actual graduation ceremony. Um, but May is out, whether it's virtual and certainly not real, it's out. Um, so then I feel like, um, what, what do we do as, as a Plan B? And I feel like we owe it to our community to give them something to hold on to and look forward to. And I feel like, um, that could, that's a date in July, whatever, the 19th to the 26th, or 26th rather, whatever that is. And then at the same time, simultaneously planned for this Plan B of a virtual experience that everybody could be a part of. Um, I think that obviously we all know deployments and other events are going to happen no matter what. And I, um, have a huge spot in my heart for people that make those decisions and those commitments to our country. And so I don't want it to, to seem like I'm not honoring their decision. But, um, I just feel like when, when Bev's words, she just said three stages, acknowledge them. We can do that in May through a lot of different suggestions that I know Dave and Bev and our whole district are, and all of us, I'm sure are being bombarded with all amazing ideas. We then have some ceremony. And then I think, you know, what Bev said, part three is giving them the opportunity to say goodbye and reconnect. I mean, Bev couldn't have summed it up better, but I do think we need to give them something solid in that part two, a ceremony. And, um, I feel strongly, as I've mentioned, that that should be an in-person thing with a backup plan for everybody, um, to have it virtually. So I think that we can do both of those things. I think we can plan both of those things simultaneously, um, knowing that Plan A might not happen because of the safety of our community. And therefore we have a solid Plan B in place.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that's, um, I'm on the same page. Do a track process, you know, give folks a date, we're going to have a ceremony on, you know, this date, and we'll make a call by X day, you know, whether that's going to be in person or virtual, and then also have a series of events otherwise to, uh, celebrate these folks. So I'm, I'm on that same page with, uh, Courtney. And frankly, it sounds like most people, you know, it doesn't sound like anyone's dismissive of potentially having a ceremony, wants to let more time pass before we make that decision. And it sounds like everybody wants to have a good backup plan, uh, from a virtual standpoint.
So I just want you to know that I've been getting some communication from the high school principal here, Erin Deluga. And, you know, she did share with me a lot of the ideas that already, uh, been, uh, discussed, suggested through various means. And, um, just to give you one example, the idea of possibly having a senior barbecue in August as one of those things where, where we might be able to bring people back and provide that type of closure. So, um, I just want to reinforce that a lot of these things, um, we can make happen and, and have been in the discussion stages for a few weeks now. Um, and will become more robust and, and defined when we get input, uh, from the community on, on some of the things that they would like to see. But, um, uh, she also said that she probably could make something happen by May 17th that would also be somewhat proximal to, uh, the May 20th graduation. It just wouldn't be able to be a full comprehensive kind of, um, uh, thing like, like the true virtual graduation would be of, of very high quality, very complete, very all-inclusive. And, and we can, uh, we can kick some of those ideas around. My only thing is I want to make sure that there's a comprehensive plan and I want to make sure that, um, certain groups and students are not, um, uh, somehow or another, uh, elevated in terms of, um, how we, uh, recognize their, um, our, how, you know, our concern and our care for them. So that, so I, I don't want to be too rash that we put some things together that aren't well thought out. But, um, but we could come up with some ideas that are, uh, maybe in sync with that May 20th date, if, if that's something that, that, uh, well, was at least brought up. And I think it was, uh, you know, might, might be a shared feeling.
So it, I'm sorry, I, I, it's Courtney, I don't, I don't know what, I'm sorry, I don't know what the May 20th date means. And I'm all about recognizing our seniors that entire week of May 17th that the graduation was supposed to be for. But I don't think, and, and everything, I, I, I want everybody to pile it on. Whatever we can do for our seniors during that week, let's do it. But I don't want that to be the substitution for whatever we, um, agree to proceed with this summer. And I'm sorry if I misunderstood what the intention of, of that was.
Well, just to, just to state that in the planning process, it was mentioned that taking into account something that commemorates that the original graduation date would have been May 20th is something that, um, uh, we can, we can accommodate that as part of the overall plan.
As the first step in the process, correct, Dave?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I could support the, the three-pronged approach that was mentioned about an acknowledgement that would be, you know, or multiple acknowledgements. That would be, um, that week of the 17th, perhaps, uh, May 20th. Uh, the, the strong desire for something, a ceremony, a live in-person ceremony in July, if not an alternative. And then the post-activity of the gathering, um, perhaps the senior barbecue in August. I think those would, would, um, would cover those three points that I think Kara brought up about honor, celebrating and goodbye. That would be a, a way to cover those three, um, avenues. And maybe perhaps maximize the amount of people who can participate. Uh, because not only is it the, um, those students who are being deployed, it's also those students who may, uh, be participating in any type of, uh, athletic sport. They may need to go in early, any type of pre-career planning, uh, may need to go in early. There's, there's a variety of different reasons why, um, people may not be able to attend a, any one of these dates, I guess. So I'm just trying to maximize as much as possible.
So Dave, do you feel like you know, you have from us what you need? Or do you need a little more clarity?
Yeah, well, here's what it sounds like to me. Um, it sounds like to me that, um, you know, we do the survey and we get actionable information and we make sure that, uh, we reasonably honor as many of the different types of thinking that, that is reflected in the feedback that we get. Um, that we stage this out in a manner where we do some, um, pre-event celebratory types of things to recognize kids. Then we, uh, begin the planning for a virtual graduation that, um, we could have ready, um, i- i- in, in the, i- if we get to the, the point where we, we get to a drop dead date, uh, and, and a, a traditional in-person July graduation is not deemed feasible. Um, we have the virtual graduation as a backup. And whatever we do for, um, some type of, uh, uh, formal graduation in late June or July, uh, is, um, that we also try to incorporate, um, some way to bring people back. If that opportunity has passed, we, we formally plan for some post-event, uh, opportunities for students to reengage with the school, uh, when it's, when it's appropriate.
Which could be a barbecue, like you mentioned in August, or it could be pushed out further depending on the situation.
Correct.
And I would love to see as part of those kind of, you know, state, I love that, I, I'm going to keep mentioning because Bev's three stages of the end of this year, it, it really rings true to me. But I, I, I feel strongly that the possibility of part of that stage three could be at some point letting these seniors, and if it's not in August, maybe it's December, letting them back into York to walk the halls for the last time. Oh my gosh, I'm going to get emotional again. Um, but just giving them that last opportunity to walk the halls and with their friends, or hopefully in December, they'll be able to do that. I don't know what the, I just want, and, and, and I do want to take this moment to acknowledge how hard Dave and Bev and your entire team, Scott, and everybody else have been working. Um, and I want the community to know, um, how, how much it means to everybody. Not just the board, but the district. And I've had multiple conversations with, um, Kara and Dave and Bev about this. And I just, people should know that that means a lot to us. You know, and it's your senior year and we feel so emotional, um, about making it all we can make in the circumstances that we're presented with right now. But I love Bev's three-tier approach and acknowledging all three steps of those approach and making all three of them important to our community and to our families and to the seniors.
I also want to come in on the heels of Courtney, this is Bev again, and mention, uh, the high school. This has not caught them by surprise. They have been sitting down and talking for weeks. Everything from that pre-celebratory stage, uh, signs, ribbons, all kinds of ideas that are on the table. They have been working tirelessly to make sure uh, that this just does not go unnoticed, that we are really celebrating the class of 2020.
Excellent.
Great. I would just like to say too, Bev, that if there's a way for the community to be a part of that honoring of the seniors in some of this, you know, I mean, I'm curious, I think the seniors will have some great ideas, but I think the community would like to be a part of that. And so if there's a way to incorporate them into some part of the celebration along the way, I think that would be, um, I think the community would like that.
Absolutely. We have had, uh, my counterpart at the city, Cassandra Schreff, has reached out and said the mayor is certainly wanting to have some kind of impact to make sure that the class of 2020 knows that the city is behind them. Uh, the library has also mentioned throwing in their support in any way that they possibly can. Our PTAs, York PTA, the boosters, I think the boosters have already released that they're doing the senior signs. They did that this evening while we were beginning our meeting. Uh, and there's also a plan, I believe, for the community. You know how we love our ribbons in our community? We are going to tie green ribbons around every possible tree we can, from everything that I understand, uh, from some of our community groups. So we will have that support from the community.
So this week, you're going to send the survey to parents and students?
Tomorrow.
Yes, it will go out tomorrow. It's going to be a busy tomorrow.
Okay. And then, um, then what happens?
Uh, the due date, the return for that information is going to be the fourth. We want that information back as soon as we possibly can, but still giving enough time. I'm sure folks will be right up their email, waiting for the links to come through at this point. But a- as soon as that information comes through, it will go back to Dr. Moyer and also to the high schools so that they can begin processing. Uh, I think Dave, Dr. Moyer raised the question of what next steps would the board need to see in terms of that information so that we could make the most of our time and make sure that we are planning as, as fast, but as effectively as we possibly can?
Yeah. And Bev, it would be great if we, um, the board could hear the results of those surveys, um, in real time as you're kind of putting them all together, because I'd really like to hear what the community has to say.
Of course. Okay.
I would, I want to ask everybody else on the board, do you, can we accept getting the kind of real-time updates and them go? Or do we want it to come back to us formally on the May, uh, what's our next, 12th?
The 12th.
I mean, I, I think it's a important enough issue where I'd like, I'd at least like to hear an update on the schedule of activities or anything else that we need to clarify at that point in time.
Sounds good.
So what about, so giving you an update and a report and making sure that we're publicly uh, sharing anything and, and giving the board additional opportunities to, uh, weigh in and provide feedback? I mean, we would, we would want to do that. So I agree with you. Um, the question is, are you comfortable if we start moving, uh, beginning, um, well, beginning tomorrow, but on into next week? Um, so that we can keep the process moving?
Um, I am, yes.
I, for sure. So you guys can keep, I know you're working hard on this, but, um, so you can keep moving forward on it.
And I'm just, I just to clarify, keep moving forward with an in-person graduation with a virtual backup plan, just so I'm clear?
Yeah, yeah, consistent with, consistent with what your expectations are that you laid out for us, but But not deviating from that, beginning, beginning to to set the, in motion, our ability to implement it effectively and and in a way that makes it special and well-thought-out. I I think, I think it helps if it, I think it's going to be very helpful to people if we can begin that process. Not not deviate from it, but just begin it.
Well, I feel like if I know that the seniors have a voice in it and, you know, the the parents have a voice in it, you can move forward. I think that dates need to be put on the calendar for just, I don't really like the word closure, but I think there needs to start to be, you know, a marking of how we're going to move through this. And there's a lot of, I think, everybody feels up in the air. So I think that if that is probably helpful to the community, even if it's holding two dates or three dates, they're at least on the calendar.
Yeah, and I couldn't agree with that more. I mean, I feel like if the community knows that July nineteenth or twenty-sixth, if we could push it a little further, is going to be graduation, whether it's in-person or virtual. I feel like that gives them a marker to celebrate that date and something to a stakeholder for that date. And I think that's important for everybody to feel like they have something to look forward to that whether it's in-person or virtual is going to happen.
Anybody else? Karen, Jim, Margaret?
I just want to make sure that we're, is Karen, that we're clear. I mean, your graduation was to be Sunday, May seventeenth, right? We keep talking about a May twentieth, but I just want to make sure that we have.
Well, so, yeah, you know what? I have to be honest with you, Karen. I I I have no idea why I was saying May twentieth. So I'm glad.
I I just want to make sure that we honor that it was, yeah, we had on our calendars for the York class of 2020, you know, May seventeenth, so that's important as well.
I, yeah, I apologize for May twentieth. I I don't know why, I I really don't. So I have to say that. I'm glad you clarified that, because there probably was some confusion about that.
I just want to make sure that they are, they are that much on our minds.
Okay, so I think if you are clear on what you got, what you needed from us?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and you'll send updates accordingly, then we can move on to summer school.
Yeah, so summer school. The gist of the summer school proposal that we have is that we we created a plan. We we started to look through various options, and there are some people that are canceling summer school. There are some people that are going straight online. We consulted with our department chairs, the teachers' council, did a lot of talking about what would be feasible. And we, what we came up with was the fact that we wanted to provide a way for kids to take the courses that allow them to keep their progression through high school going. So, for example, a lot of kids take geometry because they want to get into the next level of math. A lot of those types of courses are are the types of courses where if we could find an equivalent online course, we agreed to continue to run them. But some of the other courses, for various reasons, we did not think were going to be feasible to run in the summer. Because what we, what we found is that we thought that we were going to have a difficult time getting teachers to teach these classes if they were going to have to turn all of these, do the work to turn all of these into online courses by the time the summer comes and still ensure that they were of the type of quality that we need. So our, what we're suggesting at York is that we would accept the transfer credit in accordance with our policy to allow kids to take these courses through Illinois Virtual High School or some of our other approved providers, if they're interested in doing that. We, they would pay, instead of paying us, they would just just pay that fee to take that course. And they would fill out the form and submit it and go through the process to get credit, credit approval for it through through that process. And then i- if anybody has registered and paid, we would, we would refund people what they paid for our current summer school registration. So we also want to, in addition to that, run what we call our bridge courses, which are, many times, our our EL students are in those courses. But what they are is a three-week experience to help a student get ready for the next level of study. And we wanted to keep those going, and those run later in August. We were hoping to have those in-person and hoping to have a full three weeks, but we may have to modify that if if need be. So so those, those are the opportunities that we would make available at the high school. And then we have our title programming, which would change from what we've done in the past, which would be online and spread out throughout a longer period of time during the summer, which allows us to save some money on Title I funds that will allow us to purchase more iPads for kindergarten students at Fisher. It will also allow us to extend summer school for a longer period of time to, so that we can use title funds to make sure that our students have access to food. And then it would also provide for a longer period of continuous education that we think might be able to help remediate any skill deficiencies better than if there were were large gaps between summer school and the the start of the next school year. And then Extended School Year is a program for students with disabilities. That would also be a remote program currently scheduled from June eighth through July ninth. And that would run four days a week. And the administration is working through a lot of the different ramifications of this program and other special ed programming because of all the changes in services and different things that they have to account for with the special needs of the students. So that's what we're looking for with summer school. We still would provide some opportunities. They would just be through some outside providers, and then we would transfer the credit in at the high school.
Great. Sounds like a good plan.
So I, it's Courtney, and I just wanted to ask when families in the community will know, and and I'm sure this is going, poor Bev. Bev's Wednesday is not going to be fun. When the information about summer school and refunds for classes they already signed up for, or when, you know, like my kid who was not signed up for summer school because he was going to be in a camp for for York, and now he can't do that. When parents can then re-sign up for all these things? When do all those links come out? How many classes kids can take, stuff like that? When are all the details of that going to be pushed out to the community so parents can make a decision about summer? Because I think they're all itching to try to kind of plan what their summer will look like.
Yeah, the the Bev is, is again, ha- has a, you know, multifaceted communications plan. Some of it will start with information that's going to be going out already tomorrow or later this week. But then Erin has a follow-up newsletter that will both reinforce some of these things and or introduce some new information. If if we want, if the timing of it is better served to do it then than immediately. So there's, those are some of the, those are some of the ways that we intend to get communication out to people over the next couple of days. Bev, I, if you want to add to that, certainly, go ahead.
Courtney's right. Tomorrow's going to be interesting. I'll I'll update you all at the end of the day on how I'm feeling. But yes, tomorrow's communication is going to be the general overview, recapping tonight's meeting with some of those high points, such as the end of the school year plans for graduation, and what parents, where they can expect to get their next sets of information. Will that be from their principal? In Erin's case, it will be on that May fourth, I believe, newsletter, where she'll be putting a lot of those details in there.
Just to clarify, and if, and I wasn't listening, sorry.
That's okay.
When will you, are we giving refunds for everything, like automatically, or like, what's happening with that?
Well, Chris can speak to this, but some of the, some of that process has already begun. We had a conversation at Cabinet this morning about certain fees. Athletic fees have already been, I think, refunded. There were a lot of people that hadn't even paid yet actually at the time. So Chris, can you go in a little bit of detail on that?
We're, we're using Pushcoin to do a lot of the refunding and a lot of the communication re- re- related to refunds, which will allow parents to request a refund check if they don't want the refund applied to Pushcoin, I guess, is the way we're going to handle this. But the Pushcoin makes it easy for for us to communicate through through the Pushcoin email or communication system related to refunds. And then as, so at spring athletics, you know, there, there, if people paid, they will be refunded. And the other we're working on now is refunding one-third of the parking fee. So the parking fee at York was one fifty-six. We're going to refund fifty-two. But we're working on the refund and through Pushcoin now.
Okay. Hey, Bev, just as a, and I I'm not, I'm sure you've got it covered, because I know you do. But can we make sure that all the eighth-grade families are getting that summer school information, not just the current York High School students? Because I know, you know, that those eighth-grade families are a big population in the summer school, leading into their York years. So can we just make sure that they're included in that communication?
Yes, there's already a spot for that outline. It just needs to be filled in. Yes.
Thank you. I figured you'd have that covered.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else comments about summer school or anything? I just, I I want to say again, I know we've said it a couple of times, but, you know, for all of you administrators, thank you for all the work you're doing. I know it's just been nonstop and it's, you know, not not really slowing down. And I just, you know, appreciate that you understand that people have so many questions and need communication. And I know it takes time, and so just thank you for keeping on, so.
It's Karen. I do have the question about Title I programming. And in the details of the summer plan, it's mentioned something about us not having Title I funding next summer. So can Dave or Nikki address that and get us?
Yeah, I'll let Nikki jump in. Let me just start it. We'll have Title I, we'll have Title I funding next year. It's just Nikki has received notification that it's, that we're going to get some significant cuts. And you have until a certain period of time to spend your title funds. And we just want to make sure that we have an appropriate plan to use our funds, knowing that we're going to get cut next year. So Nikki, you can explain a little bit how that works?
Yeah, sure. So our, our funding this year was four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and we're looking to get cut by one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars next year. So that is, as Dr. Moyer said, a significant cut. But for this year, our funds are primarily set aside for summer school with almost sixty thousand dollars being set aside for busing alone. And so obviously, if we're going to do a remote learning opportunity for kids, we will need to reappropriate and rewrite the entire Title I budget, which I actually worked on today with my admin assistant after incorporating the feedback of Churchville and Fisher principals, directors, Dave Beatty, Mary, sorry, Ariana Leonard, and our summer school director, Jasmine. And what we're looking to do is we're looking to extend the remote learning opportunity this summer from June eighth to July ninth to almost the full summer. So it would be June eighth all the way through the end of July with the idea that we, the teachers would have the last, the first two weeks of August to prepare for the start of the school year, regardless of whether that's e-learning or back live with kids. But we can't provide food for kids, to my knowledge, right now with the current state and federal guidelines. We can't provide food to students and families if they're not in school. So if we, if we extend the summer learning opportunities, it would provide us with a a longer opportunity to provide food for them as well. But also, we're not looking to make gap-closing progress over the summer, but we're certainly looking to provide extensive opportunities for kids to be actively engaged in learning, especially our most needy students. And so the idea would be that they would have one hour of in-person live interaction with a teacher for reading and math, literacy and math per day. And then also the teachers would have one hour of planned time and time to check in with students outside of that. So it really doesn't cost us more out of our Title I budget. It just re-appropriates the funds. Does that help you better understand what we're thinking?
Yeah, it does. And I actually did not doubt what what you were thinking and doing and putting into place. My concern is that we are getting cut. Do we?
Yeah.
Do, I mean, why? Like, and and how can we advocate? So those are our jobs, right? So I guess that's why, you know, my ears perked up, my eyes got big when I said, what? They're going to cut something else from us?
So Karen, Title I, I, just in case everybody doesn't know, Title I is an allocation based on your free reduced lunch?
Yep.
It's, okay, so based on poverty considerations. And so, you know, it's a matter of the feds and the education budget and and the priority decisions that they're making with, you know, because our our population isn't going down, so.
That's the whole point. Yeah.
Right. Everybody's getting cut. I mean.
That's true, but also a lot, oftentimes what happens is they say they're going to cut you by one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and then you write your Title I budget based off of that, and then you find out mid-year that they're going to actually add funds. And so it makes it really difficult to adequately appropriate the funds because you never know if they're going to actually, we could find out in December that we're getting a hundred thousand dollars back that we didn't realize that we were getting. That happens on a fairly regular basis.
So I guess, I guess, I don't want to bela- belabor the point, it's ten oh nine. But what I'd like us to do is, or I'm interested in talking to you all about what do we need to do? How do we need to advocate? Because, you know, you know, you know, you heard even earlier, you know, we're, we're sensitive to the cost, right? But, and we haven't even seen the the federal government or the state budgets that they're going to. government or the state budgets that they're going to have to go after something. And they continue to say that our students are not as worthy as others. And so I think that we need to begin to work with ourselves, right? How, you know, what's the message? And work with our counterparts. Because I know that last Friday, I was on a call with, with a legislator from DuPage County. And, you know, we just need to make some traction that DuPage County does not, does not lose all funding from state or federal. I mean, state funding for education is supposed to be constitutional. And yet, we might get even little, less than we have. And we have the mandate. So we're already talking about how do we get flexibility on, on mandates? And, and, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to start, you know, cutting things in Elmhurst, we did, we worked really hard to start moving the district. I don't want us to start cutting and us to start cutting without us getting groups advocating for you're lowering all kids' education, not raising all the kids. I'm sorry, I'm just, this is a hot button for me right now.
No, I, I completely agree with you. And I, I will let you know that I have been in, in the contact with our state representative for our Title I, or I'm sorry, our, our representative at the state level for our Title I budget and our Title II budget to, to try to advocate for carryover dollars for next year, knowing that we've been cut so significantly. And at this time, they're just, they're not at, willing to do that. Now, whether that will happen or not, we don't know. But, you know, we have to move forward with rewriting the Title I grant to try to make sure that if they don't roll it over, that we have spent the funds in an appropriate way, based off the needs of the students by August of 2020.
Great. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks for the question.
Okay, then we have Freedom of Information Act request.
All right. So let me just get back to the agenda here. So two requests were received, one requesting specific invoices, which was denied, and one requesting specific bid results, which was granted.
Okay, Board Communications, board members will present reports or share information with the full board. Does anybody have anything they want to share?
Here.
Okay.
I just wanted, it's Beth. I just wanted to echo what you were saying earlier. And a big thank you to all the work that our administration and staff is doing right now. I know that, as we've said multiple times, things are changing daily. And you've all been very flexible and done a great job of getting information out to the people in the community. And we just really appreciate that. So thank you for all you're doing. I know it hasn't been easy.
Well, thanks, Beth. You know, I, I actually think likewise, you know, there have been some frustrations that the community has experienced along the way. But I think that the community has been very supportive and understanding. And when they felt it appropriate to reach out, willing to try to compliment our teachers when they were going the extra mile for their kids. And, you know, those things have meant a lot to our people, that the community has responded the way it has. So, you know, it's, we're, we're, we're doing our best. And I appreciate that you think, for the most part, we've been doing all right.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. So, anything else? I know tonight's discussion was long, but I think it's appreciated that you're getting input from us and then going out to get more input. And you've gotten input about e-learning. And I think that helps in this time that people feel like they can have a voice. So thank you for doing that, too. We have two upcoming meetings, and I believe there's a Finance Committee meeting that is not on here. So we have Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at seven o'clock. We, you know, we'll assume it'll still be virtual. And Tuesday, May 26th, 2020, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at seven o'clock as well. Decide if it's virtual still, probably. And Chris, is there?
It's in between, Tuesday, May 19th at 5:30.
Okay, virtual, obviously.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Take care of everybody.